The special meeting for the Board of County Commissioners on Tuesday, September 29, 2020. And I'd like to start the meeting by asking Commissioner Harvey if he will pray for us this morning and the Pledge of Allegiance be led by Commissioner Pickens.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a wonderful day, a day of opportunity to serve our fellow man throughout Putnam County and throughout this country. Father, give us wisdom directly from your throne room today. Regardless of the complications that we face this morning, let our minds be fresh and let us be ready to deliberate and to debate and to move Putnam County forward, Father. We thank you for all the good things that you do for us. We thank you for controlling our life and having us in the palm of your hands. And we ask all the things that we pray for in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, and thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Under the public comment section, do we have any B O C C meeting comments, emails that have been sent to the board? I haven't seen any. Have y'all been checking that account?
Yes, sir, I have, and there are none received as of this morning.
Okay. With that being said, I'll close public comment at this time unless there's somebody on the call with us that would like to make public comment on the virtual meeting. Not seeing any, I will now close public comment. And I'd like to take a point of order for a minute, if the commission will allow me to do so, before we move into the regular agenda. As I'm sure many of you are aware, there was a YouTube post on Saturday night reflecting an interaction between a Putnam County deputy and a person on a motorcycle. While I am not going to go into details, what I gleaned in that video is this person approaches and begins to berate our deputy while holding a cell phone in the deputy's face. The vile commentary from this individual was simply reprehensible and frankly offensive. Deputy Gentry maintained his composure throughout the ordeal and not once did he raise his voice or act in an unprofessional manner. He acted with restraint in the situation in which the aggressor was clearly trying to bait him for the benefit of social media followers. I'm not sure many could have exhibited the same fortitude that Deputy Gentry had in this situation, and I commend him for the exemplifying what we admire from our law enforcement deputies. For that, I'm recommending to this Board of County Commissioners that Deputy Jerry Gentry be recognized, awarded, and presented at the next meeting on October 13th with the Excellence in the Line of Duty Award.
Hear, hear. Hear, hear.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Rawls.
Quoting a wise man who once said, "You can't fix stupid," I took the opportunity to do some research on this individual. And there's actually three videos on YouTube that go back, I believe, two years where he did the exact same thing to two other deputies of ours. And I agree, I would say ditto to everything you just said. There's a lot of expletives that come to mind right about now, but I'll show some restraint. And I know it's unusual, but I will. But I hope people like this can find the exit door sooner than later because we don't need this kind of garbage in our county. I'll leave it at that.
Well said. Well said.
Unless there's an objection from anyone, then I'm going to recommend, then I'm going to ask staff to prepare this award, and I'm going to ask the sheriff if he would make sure that it's extended, that the invitation is extended to Jerry Gentry to be at our meeting on the 13th of October and where we could present him this well-deserved recognition. Seeing none, I'll make it happen. Thank you for that point of order. With that, we're going to move on to item three on the agenda. And that's going to be the Administration of the CARES Act update. And I think Ms. Young is going to take care of that this morning. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Young.
Good morning, and thank you. This agenda item is quite complex and long, so I'm going to try to give you a brief overview and then break it down into components for which we're seeking board direction from. As you remember, in our last meeting, a couple of things that happened. One was the commission expressed their interest in exploring an individual assistance program. But just following that meeting, at about 5:23 on September 23rd, FDEM released some information to the counties who did not receive the first or didn't receive their whole allocation of the CARES dollars. So if you are under that 500,000 population count, you are getting your money actually from the U.S. Treasury to FDEM to you. And FDEM is responsible for some additional provisions or restrictions on those dollars, although we all have to then also follow the U.S. Treasury guidance. So if you'll remember, we got our first 25% allocation, which is about $3.2 million. This FDEM, the new guidance released that a Phase Two distribution will be for 20% of the overall CARES allocation. That would be about $2.59 million. And that 20%, that second allocation, will be fronted to you once you've met their provisions that are laid out here before you. Everything beyond that amount of money will be released on a reimbursement phase, and after the county is assigned a grant manager to work as a liaison between us and a submission of expenses and processing the reimbursements. So once we get all of the first 45% in-house, everything forward will then be reimbursement basis only. In order to get that second 20% in-house, the county must first expend all 25% that we've originally received, the 3.2 million, and two, submit a spend plan for 100% of our CARES Act allocation to FDEM. The spend plan, although there's not much guidance on it, we believe it just simply needs to outline what our intentions are for the funds as a whole so that then we can follow through with them. We want to make that spend plan certainly compliant with the FDEM, but also retain as much flexibility in-house as we possibly can. And so in communication with the commissioners over the last several days, we've put a draft spend plan together, and that's one item that we need to discuss as a board and get some feedback on. Also, based on the estimates and what we have coming in for nonprofits and businesses, if we assume that every business that's either deemed eligible or in a missing documents case as of 9/25, we would have 346 eligible businesses. Then that's assuming 100% of those businesses who are missing documents show up with every bit of documentation that they need. And 34 nonprofits, same scenario. That includes everybody deemed eligible, as well as assuming 100% of those who are missing items show up with all items to be compliant. So at that, and at the new stipend that the board approved at $5,000 per entity, we would be at 1.9 million. So we still do have some allocation left if the board desires to do anything further in those areas. Again, just running through some brief more items that we're going to go over, and then we can talk in detail about each of the items. The board also had a concern about some of our larger nonprofits that were doing more than just covering their own expenses. So if they were providing programs to our citizens or had a greater need than whatever our standard stipend is, they wanted to have the opportunity to entertain awarding those nonprofits with some more funds respective to the programs that they've developed. So in respect to that, rather than designing an entire online platform for a program, what staff is recommending to the board is to allow those nonprofits that would be seeking funds greater than whatever standard amount you all set, to reach out to county staff, someone on the CARES Act team, and to provide a summary of the information of what their program would look like, what their expenditures would look like. And then staff would seek direction from Wood O'Brien as to whether or not they deem the program eligible. And then staff would bring that to the board, back to a board meeting. And then the commissioners could decide, based on the request, how much additional funds you want to allocate to that nonprofit or charity organization that may be doing something for our community. Staff is also seeking some direction on an individual assistance program. So we do have Wood O'Brien here with us today, and we can go through a few items regarding program design. Once the board agrees on a program design or parameters, then staff is seeking the ability to allow United Way to administer that program and to enter into negotiations with United Way for some sort of administration fee. United Way is providing these services both in local areas in the state of Florida as well as nationally. They've been involved in administering CARES Act dollars, and we believe it would be a great partnership with one of our charities who already seeks to serve our citizens. Staff is also recommending and seeking consensus to completely remove the business nonprofit and individual assistance if designed arbitrary deadlines. What we would like to do is just adopt language stating "first come, first served," and that would allow us to not stop and start or have a business think that they've missed the deadline. Because we've had several businesses or nonprofits call in, especially businesses, because we've run those the longest, and say, "Oh, my goodness, I missed the deadline by two days." But as long as we have the funds available, staff would like to just be able to continue and make sure that businesses know that we're going to do as many businesses as possible as funding allows. And then staff is seeking direction on approval to pay out the constitutional offices only for items deemed eligible by Wood O'Brien. So these are items they've already read a narrative on, they've already deemed them eligible to be paid out, and that way we can make our constitutional officers whole in the same year that they expended those expenses. And so that in a nutshell, and I realize that's a really long and a whole lot of different tangents to go through, but we can take it in any order that the board would like to have further discussion on any of those.
Okay, I think what we'll do is we'll try to take them one item at a time and discuss them and go through them instead of trying to do the whole complex thing at one time. So the first item was on the list, if I'm remembering correctly, was the spending plan. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does the board have any comment at this time on the spending plan portion of the presentation this morning? Okay, I don't see any. And so would there be a... And so would there be a, Commissioner Harvey?
I'm, I'm sorry, yes, sir. I, I do have one comment I'd like to make on that and I shared it in my one-on-one with Julie and Mistress Suggs on Friday. I would like to see the nonprofits, even if they, as long as they serve the citizens of Putnam County, I don't care where they're housed at. Okay, so that's my only comment there. I don't think they need to have a physical spot in the county, as long as they serve us, because that's going to come back to us if they have a large request. And I think we can vet it at that level. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I concur with that, Commissioner Harvey, as long as they can prove that the funds that were given to them were spent in Putnam County, because that's one of the, if I'm not mistaken, and Ms. Young can certainly tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that that's part of what has to be done, is the, the funds have to be expended in our county.
In our county and, and in a response to a hardship or a situation caused by COVID. So there has to be a direct link between what their program is doing and what we're reimbursing them for and how it was created or caused by COVID.
Correct. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, would you offer a motion to, to accept the spending plan offered by staff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we, the Board of County Commissioners accept the spending plan as put on our agenda and recommended by staff.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Ms. Young, could you possibly tell us, let's see, number two on the list of things was, what, what, what was the next order you'd like for us to take these in?
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Sure.
I didn't hear the second on that.
I didn't either.
Okay, I thought Commissioner Goddard did.
Well, he may have, but there was some.
Am I wrong, Commissioner Goddard?
You're muted.
You're muted.
That's why you couldn't hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you now, sir.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought you did, my apologies. I thought you raised your hand, so my apologies for that. So it was Commissioner Harvey seconded by Commissioner Goddard. Okay.
He's frozen.
What would you like to handle next?
Yes, sir, can we talk next about whether or not the VOCC wishes to increase the standard award amount for businesses and nonprofits? And my request, staff's request, and I think that I could also echo the clerk's request, is that whatever final amount, and I'm saying final, whatever amount you raise it to, we leave it at, because every time that amount changes, even if you change it by $1, staff on your side, the VOCC side, and staff at the clerk's office has to start over at square one. So my, my encouragement is that you would set a final dollar amount for whatever you feel you can allocate to the businesses and nonprofits.
Well, when I had my one-on-one with staff the other day, you were saying that it would create a problem if there were, was a floating the maximum amount that, that people could ask for. So my concern is, is that if we raise the amount to seven or nine or whatever the, the board wants to do it, that certain, that businesses, certain businesses just can't provide, they've been impacted by COVID to that amount. And so let's say, for instance, that we, that we, that we move it up to seven or eight or whatever, and they can only provide a COVID impact for 3,400 or 4,400 or whatever, and they can't, they don't have the impact that we allow. Are we gonna, that's going to even be harder, isn't it, to track and, and, and work the program? Or would that be workable if we allow them to only claim the, the, the impact from COVID up to that amount of money?
Ms. Frank, are you available to speak on that as well? Because we, we're impacting, we're certainly impacting two offices, the VOCC who's administering and getting all the grant agreements, and then obviously the clerk's office who's having to cut those checks. And so I'd like to hear from Ms. Frank as well.
Okay, I'm here. Yeah, we, we're concerned about, you know, making sure we've got the documentation that shows if we're giving them 4,000 or 5,000 or 10,000, that, you know, they are signing that yes, they did legitimately spend that money on COVID-related expenses according to the CARES Act. So like right now, we've got a pile of checks that we were ready to submit for $4,000 that we're waiting on those addendums to say that they agreed to the extra $1,000. So yeah, those have not gone out because of that.
No, 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 but how would it impact your offices if the board set an amount and then we allowed each applicant to, so the board would set a maximum not to exceed amount of whatever, and then let's, for instance, say we had a local business or nonprofit that said, okay, I only need half of that. So each check could be a different amount of money, although that's not logical, it wouldn't work out that way. But you would have several different increments of award amounts going out. How would that impact your clerk's office?
What we would want is the grant agreement that the business signs, we would want the correct amount on there, such that, you know, Wood O'Brien has vetted it, you guys have vetted it, and you, they've said, no, I can only use 5,500. So that is actually stated on the grant agreement and then they sign that. But other than that, no, it's not a problem.
Okay, Chairman Turner, then we, staff in-house can make that work as well if that's the direction the board would like to seek.
Okay, well then, I think with, after meeting with staff and after hearing this this morning, I think that we need to have a discussion by the board on what, on setting a maximum amount once and for all. And it could be any part of that maximum amount that the applicant could, could justify that they used. That's one of my biggest concerns in this is that, is that we keep raising the amounts and at some point we may raise the amounts higher than what the applicant can, can justify they spent on COVID. So I think we need to make that top end flexible up to a certain amount. And then also I think it would be fitting if we included in this that we were just going to take the, the arbitrary end date off and let, and let it go until the money's done, until the first come, first served, until the money is used. That way we don't continue having to move that date forward.
Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Rawls.
How long does it take to process an application from the time that it's received?
Commissioner, can I help you?
Yes, please, Ms. Young.
Yes, sir, that all varies. So when an application is received online or in-house, it first goes to Wood O'Brien to be approved. And that review takes, typically right now, they're able to get us back that review within a week, actually shorter than a week, but a week, let's say liberally. And then just as soon as, if it's deemed eligible, meaning the application was completed, all documents were already attached, then just as soon as my staff or our staff here on the CARES Act team can make contact with that business applicant or nonprofit applicant to get the grant agreement signed, that's done and then turned into the clerk's office.
So if it's, let's say it's taken two weeks, we should probably set the end date at the second week of December. So if somebody does come in, you know, we don't want to run this thing up to December 30th and then say we're cutting off applications. I think the application cutoff deadline should be around the 14th or so to give staff time to be able to process the applications, get the checks, cut the money expended. As far as the maximum amount, I personally would have no problem setting the maximum amount at 15,000 or 20,000 if, if we're going to have it where somebody comes in and says, you know, if, if the application was modified to say, I'm requesting this, this amount of money, not, not to exceed, you know, I, I can justify 5,500, like the example that Susan gave, or 8,000, but, you know, the goal is to get the, the money on the streets and we're going to have to do it in a pretty short period of time. And, you know, like I think, pretty much, I think we all, all agree that not all businesses are going to be able to justify expenditures greater than five or 10,000 anyways, if it's, if it's, has to be directly related, not direct, not related to loss of revenue.
Yes, Ms. Young?
Yes, sir, just a couple of notes. If we want to set the deadline that far in advance, that's certainly an option, as long as I would recommend we still have the caveat first come, first served, because when you.
Absolutely. Until the money's gone, until the money's gone, that, that's, yes.
Okay, and then second, if you're going to do an award, just from a accounting standpoint or financial standpoint on my end of administration, if you're going to do an award amount that high, then we may have already exceeded what you have allocated for businesses. Because if, if we went back to those businesses and 100% of them took 20 grand, you're at 6.9 million right now today and we would have to stop the program until we could account for how much.
Whatever number is, yesterday we discussed 10,000, you know, setting, I, I, I'm balling around for, you know, expecting 450 participants between nonprofits and, and businesses. If that's the case, then, you know, 2 to 15,000 should be doable.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rawls. I, I totally agree with him that we need to get the money on the street, but we need to do it in such a manner that the county doesn't have to repay the money. I think that, that I, I, I think that we need to set the amount more like 10,000 maximum because, and then they're going to have to prove that they, they were impacted by COVID up to that amount. And that'll keep us, that will keep us within the spending plan that we just, that we just approved. Is that not correct, Ms. Young?
Well, sir, they're going to have to attest, they're not going to prove to us, they're going to attest that they have been impacted and will spend that whatever dollar amount requested up to a maximum of whatever you approve. So there's no, no proof, but they are attesting.
Yeah, but they also agreed that sometime in the future, they may have to be audited if the state decides to do so.
That's correct.
By attesting so, they, it's kind of like sending in your taxes. You could cheat if you want, but they may come back and audit you, so you need to be careful about doing it. And this needs to be handled in the same manner, because the county is on the line for any funds that are expended that are not per the COVID CARES Act regulations.
Yes, sir.
So, yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I agree, I don't have a problem going up to, up to a maximum of 10,000. I, I would like to, I like Commissioner Rawls' idea about a December, but I, I think it needs to be Friday, December 4th at 5:00 PM, and that would give us 26 days to wrap things up. If, and this is a big if, if Congress doesn't extend it and there are negotiations happening right now that, that could possibly, but we have to work in the realm that we currently know. And I think that would give, any last minute filers after December 5th at 5:00 PM would not be able to apply, but that would give our staff time to wrap it up and get the checks done by December 30th. Is that okay with you, Commissioner Rawls?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, so basically right now, if I'm hearing it correct, we're going to put a maximum amount of 10,000 on the business and nonprofit program. And they have to attest that they were impacted by COVID up to that amount. And if they don't attest, they can attest to a lower amount if it's deemed that they can't breach that entire threshold. Is that my understanding, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Rawls?
Correct, sir. Absolutely. If I could throw one more component in here.
Yes, sir.
As we approach the deadline of the 4th, I think we should have a meeting, take a look at what's been expended, what's left, and then if we do have nonprofits out there or larger businesses that need, need the support, maybe be able to consider them for more money, leave that, leave that opportunity on the table at a later date.
Well, I think as, I agree with, wholeheartedly with that, but I also think that as part of this discussion today, that we're probably going to, if we haven't already, we're probably going to allow nonprofits to come back with a higher amount to be, to be on, approved on an individual basis by staff and by the commission also. Is that not one of the requests today, Ms. Young?
Yes, sir, it is.
So we, we're going to talk about that next, but if we could get through this portion of it first, that would help. Susan, you're not muted. So anyhow, the, if we could get through this portion of it, if someone would offer a motion that states that the max is 10,000, that we're going to move the program to December the 4th at 5:00 PM, and that the, and whichever other part you'd like to mention in it, Commissioner?
Still moves.
Commissioner Harvey?
Let me make a motion first, Commissioner Rawls. I make a motion that we raise the limit to, up to 10,000 maximum, and our deadline would be December 4th at 5:00 PM, and it'd be a first come, first served until the money runs out or until we get to that date.
Okay, have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls. Ms. Young, was there a, an issue in that that we needed to discuss in that that Commissioner Harvey didn't cover, or did that get everything you were looking for?
No, sir, that's everything I was looking for.
All right, I got a thumb on this issue.
Just on businesses, correct?
Businesses and nonprofits.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and then we're going to discuss nonprofits again in just a moment. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Now, I'm assuming Commissioner Harvey that, well, this means that someone that already has filed for their check, if they don't think they can cover an additional amount, they don't have to. But if they do, they can move forward. Is that right, Ms. Young and Mr. Harvey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
If I could offer one more thing, to, to alleviate the anxiety and workload on the staff, maybe we should reach out to the, the prior recipients, let them know of the changes and tell them that the only reason they would need to respond or act would be if they feel like they can justify and attest to the fact that they, that they would need more funds. So there's not a lot of rewriting.
Excellent idea. I think that's an excellent idea. I think that that would, that should be the first question is can they, can they attest to additional funds being given to them as a COVID-related expense? I think that was part of the plan anyhow, but it was an excellent, excellent comment. So with that, I'd like to, if I may, I'd like to move into the, the next, next item for discussion, which is basically nonprofits. I think Commissioner Harvey earlier in the meeting came up with an idea that if her home office was not in Putnam County, but they could attest to the funds being used in Putnam County, then that, then we would allow them to also, to also apply for these funds. Unless, unless staff could tell me that there's a problem with that or that that would violate some kind of the CARES Act of regulations or whatever, I'm totally on board with that. And in the same discussion, I'd like for the commissioners to discuss the part about the, if, if a, if a nonprofit can justify through either a COVID program or whatever, that the money expended in Putnam County is higher than the 10,000, that they be allowed to come back to staff with that plan and why, and staff can look at it first and then bring it to the board for a, for a final decision on an amount higher than the 10,000. Is that what you were talking about earlier, Commissioner Harvey?
I was, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. That's exactly what I was saying, and I think it merits, you know, the bottom line is, this program is designed to help our citizens. I don't care who's helping our citizens. So if it's an organization or if it's us, you know, let them put a plan together, let them come back. If it's a higher amount than 10,000 way up there, I have no problem if they're helping our citizens. So that's, that's where I was going, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the clarification.
Is there any other commissioners that would like to discuss that issue before I ask for a motion? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion on that, Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the nonprofit, as long, they don't have to be housed in Putnam County, they can serve the citizens of Putnam County, they put a plan together if they need more than 10,000, and it's based, it'll come before the Board of County Commissioners after staff reviews it for a higher amount.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Harvey and a second from Commissioner Goddard. Ms. Young, is that clear enough for you, or do you need any questions on, or clarifications?
No, sir, I'm good.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. All right. I think that the, um, the last thing we need to talk about on this particular one, and if I missed one, Julie will let me know in a minute, but the, um, would be the individual assistance program. I think she, uh, made comments earlier that, that we're going to have to have somebody help us administrate that program. And she has recommended the United Way after reaching out and talking to them. So, um, I think two things need to happen is if we're going to have an individual assistance program, we, we also need to discuss of the possibility of reaching out to United Way for the administrator of that. And on top of that, also, uh, I think we need to set a maximum amount, amount for the individual program, just like we just did the business nonprofit for a certain date. And it's first come, first served up to that amount for that date. But they have to also attest that they've been impacted for that amount by, uh, COVID. And just for instance, if we set that amount at $2,000, and I'll pull that straight out of the air. But if we had set it for $2,000, then the, uh, public assistance program could be, um, administered through the United Way. If, uh, if they staff can reach a, uh, a decision with them or a compromise or whatever, um, they can, uh, at that time, they can, uh, apply for up to a maximum of $2,000 until that pot of money is gone. Did I leave anything out, Ms. Young?
Well, no, sir, you didn't, but we may need to talk about the individual assistance program. It does vary just a little bit from our businesses and nonprofits. So, um, an individual seeking, um, eligibility through that individual assistance program would have to prove upfront, um, a, a financial hardship directly caused by COVID. So lost wages, uh, reduced work hours, a loss of job. And, but we would, we also need to be careful about, uh, eliminating duplication of benefits. And so we do have Widow Brian here with us today. Um, some subjects, some suggestions that they put together for us was to allow your individual assistance program to cover rent, mortgage and household utilities. Um, and that way we kind of had a category of expenditures that we can clearly link to being eligible for our CARES Act dollars. And then obviously the validation of the, uh, income source. And this would be a per household. So although it's called individual assistance, not more than one individual in the household could obtain the award. So just a few additional caveats for that individual assistance program. Um, just variations from where we are with nonprofits and businesses that I wanted to make clear to the board.
Okay. Is there any more, uh, questions of, uh, Ms. Young at this time?
I have, I have a comment. Um, I, I think, I think we, we should be able to set it at about $2,000. I don't, you know, it, it, it's again going to be based on justification for their need. Um, I mean, we started thinking about rent or mortgage payments. Three, four months for some folks, they could chew through that real quickly. But I, I think, you know, this is where we're, we're showing the community that we actually are trying to get the money out. It's just that, you know, individuals, businesses, nonprofits, um, who are also businesses, they're all, they're all going to be biting for the same pot of money. Think, you know, that way we're not drawing a distinction, um, like we were at the beginning, where it's this amount of money set aside for businesses only. Uh, I just want to make sure that's, that's clarified to the public that it's first come, first served and, and it's all businesses are included. Um, that way we can actually get all the money out there.
Okay. So Commissioner Rawls, what you're, uh, is suggesting, and I, if so, I highly agree that, that we got one pot of money for all categories. And whenever that pot of money is, is expended, then that's when the program's over, not individual portions.
Yes.
All right. I totally agree. Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do want to, I brought up a concern the other day and, and I can't be the, I can't be the CARES police on this item. Although I want people to be responsible and pay their utilities and pay their mortgage and pay their rent. I can't force them to do that. But I do think that if they, I think if they've gotten unemployment assistance, we need to look at that because there's some people out there that didn't. And they just flat out didn't get it, or they didn't apply for it, and they struggled through the last few months. And, and maybe those are the first in line folks. Because some of these unemployment numbers that we've been hearing about and reading about, people made more money being on unemployment than they were working. And maybe the working folks, uh, that kept the essential people that were working and keeping the lights on, they didn't get the benefit of, uh, of unemployment. But they, they got hit. They got hit hard. And, um, they took it, they took, they took one. So I think we need to look at that. I don't know how we address it. But since Widow Brian's on the line, maybe, maybe they can help us walk through that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, Ms. Young, is there anybody in particular that I should ask, Ms. Dunn or?
Yeah, Ms., uh, either Jay or Kira will, will jump in.
Hi, thank you for the, can, can the commissioners all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this morning. Um, one thing I want to just say in response to a, a previous comment is the, uh, you, the utility bill payments that would go directly to the utility company. So there wouldn't be a situation where you would be issuing payments to an individual and just hope that they pay the utility bill, the bill, the, the payment would go directly to the utility company. So I don't know if, if that changes, uh, Commissioner Harvey, your, your concern.
Yeah, that helps me a lot. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, that's just a, a small point and then.
Well, there's a, there's a day of reckoning coming. Somebody's got to pay the bill one day and the lights get turned out. So if we can't.
Exactly. Right. So we want to.
My concern.
Right. And so the regulations guide us that these utility payments, um, we, we can't issue them directly to the, uh, account holder. Uh, that would be in a non-compliant fashion under CARES. However, we can, we can have, uh, the payment issued directly to the utility company. So I hope that, um, it swages your concern around whether the payment would actually make it to the utility company, whether the lights would stay on, et cetera. And then, um, Commissioner Rawls, to your point about, um, the, the timing, um, we would, uh, just want, like to reiterate what, um, uh, what Ms. Young said earlier is that our team is reviewing applications on a nightly basis and providing a nightly snapshot to Ms. Young and her, her colleagues at her department. So that at any given morning, if any of the commissioners are interested on the status of, of your grant application programs, um, we are wrapping up on a, on a nightly basis. Our team is reviewing applications and including them in our, uh, threshold eligibility, um, recommendations to Ms. Young and, and her team. The, the only comment I want to, I, I would like to offer is that, um, for the commissioner's consideration, before you wrap up your meeting, is that, um, when you add in, um, quantifying factors such as, uh, up to a certain amount for some businesses, individuals and nonprofits, et cetera, versus a flat, uh, award amount, um, you do add administrative burden to, um, Ms. Young's team as far as their review and decision making. So, um, based on the request from Ms. Young, we helped set, the county set up a program that would really be looking at threshold. Some, uh, five threshold characteristics for every application. One of them being, um, residency in, in, uh, Putnam County. Though we'll have to kind of rethink that app, that, that, um, evaluation because it's clear from, uh, the commissioner's perspective that serving the county is more important than living in the county. And so we can take that into account in our threshold review. Um, but the more quantifying fa, qualifying factors that you add in, um, the more, um, calculations the evaluation needs to include. So we did not provide to the county, though we certainly have provided to other counties and other entities, um, a, a scoring, an application scoring that is more nuanced. So it would include perhaps like so many points if you lived in the county and then an additional five points if you served the county. So that you would have a ranked eligibility for all your applications. Because right now the process that's being utilized is pretty much just threshold. Is this application eligible based on certain criteria or not? And then the ones that are a little complex, um, Ms. Young and her colleagues have been generous and helped us triage through some of the more complicated ones. Uh, so I, and, uh, I, I just add that, given that, um, we are on a fairly tight timeline, as you all noticed, to get to push these resources out to the folks who need them the most. So, um, while it would be, uh, beneficial to be able to offer a ceiling amount to those who can attest that they have that need, it also, just for your, and I say this only for your awareness, is that, um, it does add another layer of administrative complexity to do a more, uh, quantitative review versus a threshold eligibility review.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harvey?
Uh, Kara, I appreciate your comments. I do want to clarify something. I didn't say that out of town people that were serving our people are more important. I said they're equally as important.
Understood.
The other thing is, my question was on the individual assistance. Could we, could we take people who did not get unemployment first? And because I know it's going to put more burdensome on staff. We can hire more staff and we can use CARES Act to do it. That's not an issue to me. So my point is very clear. There's some people that have been in the trenches and been working.
Sure.
And, and they didn't get the benefit of unemployment at a higher rate of, or of payroll. So can we, can we say this? Can we say we're going to be looking at the people who didn't get unemployment first? And then we'll look at the people who did get unemployment second for individual assistance?
Yeah, we'd have to, um, think about how, uh, someone would prove that they did not get unemployment. Cause it's easy to prove that you did get it. You just show a copy of the receipt. But we'd have to think, um, we'd have to put our heads together with Ms. Young and her team to try and figure out what could someone possibly submit that would show or demonstrate that they did not receive a benefit?
Yeah.
Yes. So Commissioner Harvey.
I don't know. Might be complex.
If I may, Commissioner Harvey, um, I, I see, I see exactly where you're coming from. I really do. But I don't know how, I don't know how you could get that done. Um, I mean, if, if, uh, Kira or Ms. Young, one can come up with an idea, maybe include it in the questionnaire that's, uh, sent out to them. Have you, because I think that would be, if they've already been paid back by higher unemployment for the, for the COVID expenses, then that would be a duplicate of it, of, uh, of benefits. And that would probably keep them from being able to, uh, claim against this program. If they received $600 a week in COVID related benefits over top of their unemployment for a period of time, I don't know that that wouldn't take them out of the program. I don't know that. But it, so I just, I think we need to definitely discuss this a little more thorough. With my, uh, Ms. Young, did you have a comment?
Um, yes, sir. I, I'm gonna err on the side of concern about trying to do a tiered situation where we prioritize one individual assistance over another based on other aids they may have received. Um, for a couple of reasons. Um, one, we're, we're again trying to get the money out as quickly as possible because we do have a deadline. And, um, secondly, just as Kira mentioned, it's easy to prove something if it's true. It's very hard to prove something if it's false. So outside of an attestation or again, another certification that the individual would be making, um, it, it may not be, it may not be efficient for us to attempt to make one priority over another, especially if your threshold amount is low enough that we aren't going to be concerned about essentially running out of individual assistance funds. So I think first we need to consider maybe what the commissioners are thinking, what the individual assistance amount of money is, what that stipend looks like. And just like with the businesses, we really had no, um, idea how many businesses we were going to get. And so at first we were like, oh, we're going to have a thousand businesses. Well, actually even today, um, weeks into it, we don't have a thousand businesses. So it's very possible that, um, we may not need to necessarily exclude someone.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Harvey has his hand up and then Commissioner Rawls. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could we do maybe, maybe we could do this to make life easier? Maybe for those who got assistance is one amount. And maybe for those who haven't got assistance is a higher amount. For example, if you got unemployment and you got other federal assistance, then it's $1,500. If you didn't get anything, it's $2,500. And they attest to that. And they, what would, would that cause any wrinkles? Or is that something that we could, that might solve a lot of issues?
May I, may I, may I suggest, um, maybe looking at it from just a slightly different angle to keep the, uh, top amount there, but making them just, just like we were doing for the business or whatever. Making them, uh, because for the individual, if I understand Ms. Young correctly, they've got to prove it. It's not a matter of just attesting to it like the business or nonprofit. They got to prove the impact. And so, you know, if we're going to do that, I think we can just leave that at a certain level of like two grand or whatever you want to say to that commissioners, but just leave it at a certain level and make them justify and prove how much they've been u- up to that maximum amount, how much they've been affected by COVID.
That's a good idea, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Rawls, did you have a comment, sir?
Yeah. So, um, Kara, can you talk about Clay County and how they did it? Cause they, you guys worked with them and they, they did a family assistance program. What, what did they do? Who got it? Who, who managed to form, how they get the money out? What were their parameters?
Well, um, we, they actually designed that program, um, and then shared it with us just for comment to ensure compliance standards were being met. Um, again, as you're, you and your colleagues on the commission board share the concern with all the counties across Florida and the country that no one wants to be in a position of looking at a potential clawback of funds in four years. So, um, our role with Clay County and the design of that program was to evaluate what their board of commissioners had prioritized and do a compliance check. So.
But, but, but I'm asking you to do is can you talk about their program specifically? Tell us what, what they did and can, you know, is that relevant to us and can we do the same thing or?
Absolutely. Uh, it, it's, uh, relevant, um, with whatever county specifics you would like to see reflected in the application. Some of them, uh, were, there was only one part of their qualifying eligibility co, uh, component that was reflected of directly of the federal language. And that was about who should be served and whether citizenship needs to be proved or not. And that's just reflective directly of the CARES regulation language. The rest of it is fairly specific to the county. But was set in a generic enough way that when, um, Ms. Young's team and I, and our team on the Widow Brian's side looked at it, we thought it was, uh, fairly reflective of what, um, your county, of Putnam County could use the sim, a similar type of evaluation. Now, that being said, they do not do a, a quantifiable, uh, distinguishing question between have you received benefits or not? Um, there's a single award made if you qualify and are eligible for the program.
So take me through the, take me through their, their program then. Um, they're not asking if, if you received other assistance. Is that, is that correct?
Um, you know what? I'd have to, give me a quick minute and I'll.
Their, their program's closed out. I could look at it last week. I can't look at it this week.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, just, um, I have your program open on my other screen ready for comment. I didn't have another client county up, but I, if you give me one quick minute, I can, I can pull it up.
It's my understanding, Ms. Dunn, that y'all are also working with Hardee County and that they have an individual assistance program that's probably different than Clay County. So.
That's correct.
Well, I agree, uh, wholeheartedly. I think what we need to do is let Widow Brian work with staff and come up with a Putnam County program instead of just trying to adopt somebody that may not, one size may not fit all because they've done.
Correct.
My understanding that Henry, that, uh, that, uh, Hardee County and Clay County, their programs are totally different, uh, or not, maybe not totally, but they're very different. And if that's the case, then I think we need to have a Putnam County program using the highlights of the other programs that they've already come up with and develop it for Putnam County. I just don't think it would take much longer with the, uh, the, the, with the, uh, the work that Widow Brian has already done for us and the other counties.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but what I'm, I, I guess where I'm confused is this sounds like it should be something simple, but we're making something very complex out of it. It sounds like we should be able to get this money in the street in a pretty rapid fashion like Clay County did, but we're not. And, and instead of dragging our feet or coming up with, with. coming up with, with issues why we can't do it, I want to know what people have done that works. And let's just not reinvent the wheel. Let's get the money out there to the folks. If they have to attest that, that they have not received any assistance on the programs, make that attestation a requirement. If they don't have to attest to that, then don't make it a requirement. But it sounds, it sounds to me like, we're making a lot more out of this than we need to, taking the typical government approach. Let's take, let's take, put this thing on the, on the, on the high speed train and get it out, out on the street. Because we've been messing around with this thing since August, and now we're coming in October.
Right. And we, and I, I share your concern around the timing, which is why we delivered to Ms. Young's office a program template that does exactly as you request, gets the money out real fast. We can't be in a position to make a decision what's best for the county. Obviously, that's your role as the county leadership. So we designed a program framework that we delivered to her office the other, yesterday, based on a request that we received from her at the end of last week. And there's a few decisions that you all have to make about what's best for your county. And then there's no reason we can't roll it out quickly.
Commissioner Harvey? Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, I, I just really, I appreciate Commissioner Rawls' comment. I was just hearing from constituents who felt like they were being slighted, that people who, who have gotten unemployment or got other assistance, were getting, were getting everything, and they were getting nothing. But yet, they stood in the trenches during this time, and, and they felt slighted. That was.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm gonna try to do this as delicately as I can, where I don't start a fight on here. But I actually take a little bit of exception to Commissioner Rawls saying that we drug our feet. We, I've called, this is the second CARES Act meeting that I've called just to talk about this, when the issues have come up, and that keeps from dragging our feet. I'm, I'm wanting to get this money on the street just as bad as anybody else has. But as rules come forward, you don't know how they're going to be until they actually become rules. So I, excuse me, I do share his concern with trying to get this on the street as much as possible, but I don't think we've been dragging around on it.
We're just finding out the staff has, has a tentative plan. I haven't seen a copy of that. So as much information as we can get, you know, I, I had a one-on-one, just like everybody did yesterday with staff. We're having a meeting today. There's not a lot of time to digest this. The, the agenda that didn't even go out until 4:30 yesterday afternoon. We need to be given the information as, as fast as staff gets it, because right now, we're, we're being asked to make a decision on something that we don't have any information on, but they do. That's my point. But if, if it's something as simple as taking Hardee County, Clay County, mashing it together, or just us sitting down for a couple of hours with the documents, going through the highlights and lowlights of them, and, and then picking out the pieces and parts that we like and get it to our citizens. This isn't rocket science. I, I can't imagine that we're the only county in Florida that's taking a look at this and saying, oh, my God, we have got to do our due diligence here, because we're, we're going to get handed our butts if this thing goes south. Other counties have already done this. And I, you know, I'm not saying that we're not as sophisticated as them, but we're not. And we don't need to be spending as much time as we are, and, and waiting, and waiting, and waiting. We're fixing to be asked to make a decision on something that we haven't seen in writing. And I personally would like to see what, what we're looking at.
What portion have you not seen in writing? The program?
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't seen our, our, our family assistance plan.
Well, that's because we haven't developed one.
Right. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. But we.
Unless, sir, unless we move forward and give them direction, they haven't been given direction to develop that program yet.
It, it sounded to me like, like Kira said, she, she delivered something to them yesterday. Maybe we should, maybe we should take a look at that, and then have, have a meeting on Thursday and wrap up that portion of it.
Great. And I would just, I would just add, I'm, I'm just looking at my board here. So a number of other counties in Florida that Widow Brian is working with, I would just, just so, just for context, there are one, two, three, four, five, five, six counties that we're working with. And most of them are at the same point, or maybe just a few steps in front of you guys. So you're really not dragging your feet or far behind. A lot of the, the, the Hardee County program, for example, has just been approved by their Board of Commissioners last week, their spend plan. So their hope was to get that up and operating, starting yesterday. Monday was the opening day where they actually could receive applications. But several of the other counties, this is complicated, and you're, you do want to combine the, the county's capacity to meet the urgent need in the community, but also protect itself from any possible audit. So it does make sense to be thoughtful and careful, and then go forward. And I would argue that Ms. Young and her team have, have taken exactly that approach. They've, we've had, aside from having weekly calls, we've had tons of correspondence between us on specific little, kind of the devils in the detail issues. And then as soon as we had the model, Ms. Young's office, you know, unleashed both of these programs immediately, and we're roll, we're seeing the applications roll in very, very carefully. The last of the programs to go is this individual and family assistance program for your county. We delivered the framework, it's a set of recommendations just yesterday. So we're, we're happy to take any questions while we're here on the line with you, or to follow up with Ms. Young's office as the week goes by.
I think, I think my point is being missed.
Commissioner Rawls.
Good, good.
Okay, at this point, we don't have, we don't have an assistant program, an individual assistance program.
Right.
Until this board votes to have one, we don't even have one. So, you know, I appreciate the fact that y'all came up with the framework ahead of a program that we don't even have yet. So thank you for that. But if we vote on that today, then we can look at the framework and, and, and decide how to go to it from there, only after we discuss the next several issues we need to discuss today. Commissioner Rawls, did you have another comment, sir?
I don't want my point to be missed. Clay County had their family assistance plan out weeks ago. FDEM just came out with their requirements. Everybody's having to put together their spending plan, all that. We're all on the same page here. I understand that all that came out from the state in the past few days. But we, the, the family spending plan, or the, the family assistance and individual assistance plan should not be something that takes a long time, that has to be deliberate a lot. If we're trying to get to a, you know, I, I personally think there should be a maximum of $2,000. Let's set a, a lower threshold at whatever, and then be, have the latitude, like we're doing with the businesses and the nonprofits, if somebody has an argument, to be able to come in and say, look, you know, I, I got hit here. I've, I've got, I'll use Ted Stackpole as an example. You know, he, he, he's a foster parent that fosters a lot of kids, and he, he has a large burden, I'm sure, on a monthly basis. So if somebody like him came in and said, look, you know, we got hit pretty hard here. Can you help us out? I think we should have that flexibility as well. But, you know, let's move this thing forward, get something put together that'll work for us. We're not that much different than Clay and Hardee County. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is any Commissioner, Commissioner Harvey?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You know, this happens a lot, and I'm on plenty of boards that something happens at the last moment. Let's go ahead and pass this today. Give, give staff the opportunity. Then we can look at the documents, and if a commissioner has an issue, they can send that back to staff and say, would you consider this? But let's move this thing forward today.
Is that a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the Putnam County Individual Assistance Program, up to $2,000. And that's it. Thank you.
There we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Goddard. Ms. Young, do you need any clarification on any of those actions?
No, sir. Either you can combine it with this one, or we can take it as a separate item. Staff is asking for the board to allow them to entertain United Way to administer the program.
I'm sorry.
Widow Brian is not a grant administrator. They're, they're our consultant. They're going to help us with program design, but they do not have the, the means to quickly turn this program into something that we can administer.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, I amend my motion to allow staff to enter into a contract with United Way to administer this program.
Hey, we have amendment to the motion by Commissioner Harvey. A second to the motion, also a second to the amendment, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes, sir.
Under questions?
Yes. We're, we're under discussion. Commissioner Rawls, go ahead.
Is there a maximum amount we're going to pay United Way, or is it going to be an open-ended contract?
Likely, most administrations are a percent of the award. So that would be a floating percent, based on how much individual assistance we give out.
Are we going to see this contract before we vote on it? Are we voting on it now? Are we voting on a, a blank contract?
All staff is asking is for the board to allow staff to negotiate an agreement for services with United Way to administer it.
But are we going to see the agreement come back to the, the commission for final approval, or no?
It would come back to the consent agenda to execute.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, that's better. I missed that last one.
They will come back in front of the board of county commissioners on the consent agenda once we, once we negotiate the agreement.
Okay. And then back to the program. We're voting on a program that's not written yet. Are we, are we basically just voting to build a program that we can look at later with a maximum of $2,000? Is that what the, what the motion is?
Correct.
Thank you.
And this will come back, Mr. Chairman, this will come back for our review before it goes to the consent also?
I don't know. It, it could come back, the program could come back for review, but I would recommend that once they come up with a program within the perimeters, that they can't administer it until we get United Way on, on board with it. And so that's going to be the, the key issue, is having the administrator, the administrator, and, and that's got to be recommended, I mean, reviewed and passed by the board.
Mr. Chairman, may I make, may I make a recommendation under discussions, is possibly, let's give staff, maybe till next Monday or Tuesday, and we can come back to a special meeting, real quick, to get this one item handled real fast.
There you go.
Okay.
Also, one more question. Is, is, there is no United Way in Putnam County, correct?
Ms. Young?
That, that is correct.
There's no physical office, but Ms. Nelson's on the line with United Way, and they do currently service our Putnam County residents.
That's right.
It's a tri-county area, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner.
I believe you're right.
I didn't, I didn't know with them not having a presence here, if that's going to be a problem for, for our citizens. Or, or maybe they could set up something temporarily in one of our offices. I don't know.
Ms. Nelson's trying to interject, and if we let her, we talked to her yesterday, and she talked about having physical presence here to some degree.
I'm hearing everything twice.
I just muted Mr. Suggs, so you're not, they're sitting in the same room. So, Ms. Young, could you please say that again?
Yes, sir. Actually, I was giving Ms. Nelson the opportunity to speak. She's here representing United Way. And we did speak yesterday briefly about United Way assisting with this process. And we did already discuss the, the fact that it would be most convenient for her to have a presence, at least for some period of time throughout the week here, in order to assist citizens. But Ms. Nelson is here.
I'm good. I'm good. I don't.
I'm good.
Are you good, Commissioner Rawls?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that being said, I'm going to call a question, and I'm going to vote on the amendment first. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it, and amendment carries. All in favor of the motion as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it, and motion carries as amended. Okay, we have clarity there, Ms. Young, on that part of it? Okay, good deal with United Way. Now, as part of, as part of the CARES Act, do we need to talk about anything before we talk about funding municipalities, and the C, and the CRF funds? Are we going to take them or not? Either one of those issues?
Yes, sir. We do. So on your, also seeking, staff is seeking some direction on approval to pay out the constitutional offices. We did not include municipalities at this time, unless you'd like to add that as well. But at this time, we haven't included municipalities, but constitutionals, yes, sir.
Okay, excuse me. I had that backwards. Staff is recommending that we go ahead and pay out the constitutional requests that were amended, that were okay by Widow Brian. And I think we have a list of them in the packet on the amounts. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur. I believe we need to make our constitutionals whole right now. My concern is also that they don't have to give us this money back in their budget. I mean, because fiscal year is ending here, October or September 30th. So, you know, for them to have to get the money and give it back to us, let them keep the money into next year, if that's a possibility.
Well, Commissioner, I think that the law states that any money that's left over at the end of the year, they have to return. And so with that being the fact, I don't know that we have the authority to just give it straight back to them. They're going to have to turn it in to us, and then we can give it back to them if they, if there's a need for it. But I'm not going to pick on any particular one, but just say constitutional law for X is going to give back a couple hundred thousand dollars this year, and they've already notified us. And they've had 5,000 or 50,000 in COVID-related expenses. We made them whole. That's going to increase the amount that they're going to be able to give back to us, but it's completely was covered by the, their CARES, their COVID-related expenses were completely covered. So yes, if they ask for it back for some reason, that would be one thing. But if they're, if they're giving us money back anyhow, which is excess money on their budget year, it'd be up to the board on an individual basis. Do we give that constitutional, any of that money back or not, if they had some at the end of the year? Ms. Young?
Yes, sir. Just on this subject, I have talked to several of the constitutionals, and you're correct in the way it would flow. So essentially, what could happen is a constitutional could say, I, I ended up spending $23,000 on sanitation and provisions to make our office safe. And so I covered that. But I, but I, in order to cover that, I had to defer the purchase of XYZ. And so they may come back. But honestly, some of them may not. And so to set a blanket rule may not be in the best interest of the board. It may be better to take them on individual request as they come back to the board.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, along those lines, let's, let's play the scenario that we give constitutional officer X $50,000, and they return back to us $40,000. Does that go in our general fund? Or is that going to be going back to the CARES Act money? That, it, it's, it's a logical question here, because it looks like almost, I don't want to use the sleight of hand type thing, but if we're giving them CARES Act money, and they're giving money back to the Board of County Commissioners as unused funds, you know, does that put us in a, in a audited situation big time at that point? Or do we just wait till October 1, make them whole, and be done with it? There. I hope I didn't muddy the water.
I think the constitutionals, if I'm not mistaken, have requested that we make them whole in this calendar year that they had the impact. Is that not right, Ms. Young?
That's what we discussed about the fiscal year budgeting. And so if we, they expended the funds in this calendar year, fiscal year, we would make them whole in this fiscal year. Those who would be returning funds to us would be just like a normal return, although the, the logical expectation is, at some point, they're going to come back to us and need those funds that were already allocated for XYZ in their offices. So it was part of a normal budget cycle. And instead of being able to use their normal budget for what they intended to, they ended up using their normal budget for Plexiglas, and for temperature scans, and for hand sanitizer, and for janitorial. And so at some point, those two things have to catch up. And so that's the intent in, in making sure that we make all of these offices whole, before we, you know, before that fiscal year turns over.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So the expectation that you're in is that we give constitutional officer X an amount of money, they are going to probably refund back some of that money, and it's expected that the Board of County Commissioners will then in turn, give them back some portion of the money, because they, they're going to be unfunded on their budget? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, I think logic, logic would predict that at some point, there is going to be where the budget has to reconcile. So at some point, some constitutionals who may not be seeking over and above, now, I've had one constitutional tell me he literally may not make it at the end of the week. But other constitutionals likely are going to refund that a portion, at least to, back to the board. But at some point, logic would, would expect that those unfunded budgetary items from fiscal year 20 are going to catch up to them. And this would make them whole at the point that they. at the point that they do. So, what I expect the board to do in the future, I guess I can't really predict what y'all are going to do, but yes, I would expect you to see a constitutional or two come back to you and say, I wasn't able to do this particular project in this fiscal year because XYZ and I was made whole at the end of that fiscal year. However, it was returned to you and now I'm asking for it back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner, or excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to be polite here in that we were asked several months ago to put together our needs for COVID impacts to our office, which we did. And I think that to come back, one day left in the fiscal year and say, you're going to make us whole when we don't have the luxury to not be whole as we move through the year. So, as we see our declining revenue, we also have to cut expenses and we have to manage that so that we get to the end of the year with not having a deficit. And I just, I'm frustrated that we've waited till one day to go in the fiscal year. So, I'm looking at an amount, you're talking the sheriff's office, $900,000. What in the world do you expect him to do with that? He can't run a deficit either. And so, we've had to manage our revenue by cutting the services, by cutting costs, and we've done that all year. So, I'm, personally, I'm just frustrated with the whole process and don't really understand what the point is at day 364 of our fiscal year. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Well, Tim, wouldn't you agree that, I mean, I don't care. I don't care if we do it today or do it tomorrow or whatever. I was brought, I was asked to bring this to the board, to ask if they would make the constitutional officers whole in this budget year and then they, and then they can move forward. We haven't had the ability to do it up till now. So, I mean, it's either today in this budget year or day after tomorrow in next budget year and I don't really care which one it is. I'm sorry that you're frustrated at us about it, but that was our two options.
Okay. So, you can approve $23,000, $7 to my office to cover COVID costs that we've expended and on October 1, I'm going to give it right back to you. So, to me, it's the same thing, do it or don't do it.
Okay. Well, we were actually, I think, requested, Julie Anne, could you tell us where this came up with, that we do it this year instead of just do it in two days? Because it really doesn't matter to me.
I'm going to let Administrator Suggs take that question.
Okay.
We're just trying to, as you know, we were asked to reach out to all the constitutional municipalities early on and get their expenditures. We have since sent those into our consultant and we've gotten information back. We're just trying to, whatever we can do for our constitutional, I understand the position that Mr. Smith is in and the rest of the constitutionals. We did speak yesterday briefly with Ms. Susan and we did have this same basic conversation that most of these funds would most likely be given back. But I think what Ms. Julie Anne is trying to say is that, you know, if we can, if we can give back the funds that we knew were allocated and expended for this fiscal year, if those funds do come back to us from the constitutionals, then we can put those in our general fund reserves or wherever, knowing the fact that next year, this coming fiscal year, that there's going to be expenses that were not able to be utilized in this fiscal year because of the COVID expenses, that we're going to be able to utilize those funds to offset those costs. And I think that's kind of where we're at. So, again, it doesn't matter. We're just trying to clean house and just make sure that we were, you know, taking care of the expenditures in this fiscal year, but if you want to wait till October 1, that's fine as well.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think there's a win-win on this one either way. And I think the best thing we can do is we go ahead and make our constitutional officers whole as of today and, you know, let them decide how much they're going to be able to give back, if any, at that point. And with an expectation that probably in the fiscal year 2021, they're going to be coming back to us for a portion of what they gave back. And I think that's just, I think that's the only way we can put this thing to rest and make it whole at this point, based like Mr. Smith said, on the 364th day of the fiscal year. So, but I don't see any other, there's no other win here other than to make them whole today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any additional, is there any additional, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus here, but this request didn't come from any of us and so I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus at all. But this, this request didn't come from us to make this happen. So, I'll take a motion from the commission on either way they want to go. I think it'd be a whole lot cleaner if they just went ahead and cleaned it up and gave them the money back this year like was requested and then they can bring it back to us and the commission can just vote to give whatever part back to them they need to make it through next year's problems with COVID or whatever may be. So, whatever y'all want to do is fine with me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we give back to the constitutional officers the money that deemed eligible by Wood O'Brien today or this fiscal year.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. Why would we not include the municipalities? Because they have the same burden that everybody else does.
We're going to do that next time, understand?
Yeah, I always understand we're doing that next, right?
Yeah, we're going to discuss that next. Yes, sir. That's one of the issues we're going to discuss today, but I think it's different than constitutionals.
All right. You know, I advised the staff yesterday and I'll say it now, you know, I think looking at this, that government as a whole is looking to take $4 million out of $12 million. That's a lot of money. I'm not sure that all the money that's being pulled in by our governments is necessary. It sounds to me like the clerk of court has a real, good number at 23,000 and you take a look at the sheriff's department with their initial request at a million six and now it's 900,000 after you've taken out stuff that wasn't COVID-related. I think, I think we're stretching what the intent of this money was for and taking it away from our taxpayers potentially. But I'm not going to vote against this, this motion, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Well, I don't, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Rawls. Are there any more comments before we vote on the motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Turner?
Yes, Ms. Frank?
We need to clarify the motion that we can only reimburse year-to-date expenses. The numbers on the agenda item are projections. They are not year-to-date. We can only reimburse year-to-date.
Do we have those amounts?
Yes, sir. That, well, no, sir. What's going to happen is after you, we deemed eligible up to this amount and then each constitutional is already collecting their paperwork to verify what's been spent out. Items that have been invoiced and paid will be the only ones reimbursable at first. Obviously, we'll reimburse, we'll continue to reimburse them as they provide those invoices. Some have already provided them in whole to me. So, each constitutional is very different in what I have in paperwork, but yes, that's correct. We would only reimburse as they have expended.
I need to make sure that's what the motion covers. Is that what Ms. Frank has recommended? That we only reimburse for expenditures in this fiscal year? Is that what you attended, Commissioner Harvey?
That's correct. I think my motion says deemed eligible by Wood O'Brien up to those placeholder numbers and they would have to submit invoices to prove those costs.
Okay. Was that, was that what you understood, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Frank, is that clear for you now?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Now, the next item on the agenda would be the same thing, almost the same exact discussion, which would be from municipal funds. Do we want to make the municipals whole for what they've, for what they've done to this date? Or do we want them to bill us and, or show us and like we told them all along that we were going to do, which was you spend the money and we'll turn it in. When we get the money, we'll give you the money back. That was the deal we made with the municipals from day one, if I'm not misunderstanding something, or if somebody comes back and tells me what, where the difference is. So, that's what I thought our deal was with them. You turn in your funds, we'll get them approved and as you expend them, you send us, you send us your paperwork and we'll turn it in for FDEM to give you your money back through us. Is that what I didn't understand, Julie, or what?
Well, so Commissioner, remember, that's not going to happen until we've expended our first 45%. So, we're not going to get an answer from FDEM or a grant liaison at all. We have turned the municipal requests received to date. We do have one pending that we're getting some more information on, but of the municipal requests, all that, all except for the one, have been deemed eligible by Wood O'Brien in the same capacity that we did for the constitutionals. So, if we took the same approach, if and when the municipality showed us where there had been services received, invoiced and paid for, then they would, they could be eligible for the reimbursement from the commission.
Okay. What is the will of the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harvey?
I move, I make a motion that we make our municipal partners whole and that's up to 575,000 as a placeholder number and they submit invoices to make them whole this fiscal year.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Rawls to pay the municipal partners up to 575,000 after it's been invoiced and cleared. Is that, was that your motion?
Correct.
Okay. And that was seconded by Commissioner Rawls. So, Ms. Young, do you need any further clarification on that issue before we move forward?
No, sir. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that being, but is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it, motion carries. Let's see. Ms. Young, are you prepared to give us a statement on the CRF funds that we were discussing the other day that's on, you wanted to be part of this discussion?
Yes, sir. We can begin discussing it here and if you're able to reach a decision, then great. And if you want to seek some additional information, then we can do that as well. In conjunction with that individual spend plan, so there are several caveats to the CRF funds which are coming through ship. And if you'll remember back, just last meeting, last Tuesday, you authorized me to reach out to Guardian and allow them to be our administrator for those program, for that program. Now, that program comes through our ship funding and is very stringent in the requirements of the recipient. The funds have to be awarded and they have to be HUD required, all the HUD requirements apply. There's a maximum income of household that requires, there's some additional requirements and there's only $306,000 in that pot of money. And so, as we explored the individual assistance program, it is staff's belief that we can do more individual assistance than we can do with the CRF funds. And because having both programs running concurrently brings a whole lot of caveats and risk of duplication of benefits, which then fall, the liability falls on the county, as well as, and this is, this is additional, a piece of information that applies, when I reached back out to Guardian on Wednesday, their entire team was ill and being tested and/or quarantined and unsure when they would be back. So, I don't know where their entire team was, but the entire team responded that they could not, until they, until they get past the illness, they could not come back to us with the CRF administration. So, we would like the board to discuss the possibility of simply eliminating that CRF, the $306,000, to reduce the amount of risk and liability that we would carry in the duplication of benefits for our individual assistance program and to allow our individual assistance program the most flexibility in helping our citizens.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harvey?
Yeah, I totally agree. On my one-on-one, we had that conversation and honestly, for me to send back any money is, it's hard, but we could find ourselves in some issues here. You know, trying to do the right thing could cost us. So, I think the right move is to get rid of the CRA funds and, and just stick with what we got right now with the CARES Act funds.
CRA or CRF, Julie?
CRF.
F.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. The, so was that a motion, Commissioner Harvey?
That is, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we do not follow through on that CRS money and we just stick with our CARES Act money.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner Goddard, a motion by Commissioner Harvey, second by Commissioner Goddard. Is there any further discussion on the issue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Before we move to the next item, we're going to take a five-minute break, a five-minute recess. Order. And, uh, with that being said, um, we're going to, uh, we got the municipal funds done. Julie, are you on with us yet?
Yes, sir. I'm here.
Okay. Was there any part of the recommendation that you made in the agenda item that we have not covered or that I have missed?
No, sir. You did fabulous.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Um, the, then we're going to move on to item number four, which is a human resources item. Is, uh, Angela going to take that or who is going to take that issue, uh, Julie?
I'll take it, Mr. Chairman, because Angela's in another meeting right now. Okay. Uh, this is, uh, this is the, uh, uh, the collective bargaining agreement with your local union, uh, two, oh, oh, two, uh, United Brotherhood of Carpenters and Joiners of a, of America, uh, through September 2021. I believe, uh, your, uh, county attorney, Mr. Commando, was the, uh, uh, lead attorney on this agreement. I don't believe there was any materialistic changes. Uh, it's been voted on by their union and approved. And they had asked us if we could get it on the agenda today, uh, for ratification. Uh, one of the reasons why is so they could go ahead and partake of their 3% increase that the commissioners awarded as of October 1st.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Commissioner Harvey?
Let's get this done. I move that we accept the new carpenters' union contract, March 12th of 2019 to September 30th, 2021.
I second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard, uh, to accept the, uh, union contract agreement as presented today. Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Mr. Rawls?
The, when I was reading this, it just kind, kind of came to mind that it looked like the whole contract, because we're voting on the whole contract right now, was opened up, even though they only discussed one, um, article. Um, would it have not been easier just to handle this as an addendum to the contract and let the existing contract run its normal course of time?
Commit, uh, Mr. Suggs?
The, the contract itself was, was brought today, uh, that, again, so we could get it ratified today. That would go ahead and put it in, basically into effect so that the union members that were awaiting their 3% increase could go ahead and get their 3% increase as of October, uh, 4th. As you know, the next commission meeting wouldn't be until October 13th. And, uh, we wanted to try to get this done for them as a, a show of good faith. Uh, they were, they, they had no materialistic changes in their agreement. So we wanted to award them and get it on the agenda today to get that opportunity.
I, I, I got that. That's, that's, that's the question. The question is, wouldn't it have been a lot easier just to bring an, an addendum to their existing contract instead of opening up the entire contract? Um, you know, when I, when I first got this, I thought, my gosh, we just settled this thing March of last year. Um, it's a new contract. It was a three-year contract, um, and didn't understand why they didn't just bring an addendum and it requests an addendum to the contract. That's all. I, you know, I got a problem with the contract itself. I just thought that's awfully risky on both sides to open the contract up like that. Um.
But it, it's been settled, I think, up to this point, has it, Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir. It has. It is. And they're good to go.
And reviewed by our council and so.
If we open up the, the entire agreement, then they pick articles that they would like to have discussed and, and each, each gets together on those articles and then we move forward on those. And, uh, so now we're just here to ratify the final agreement on all the articles of the, of the, uh, uh, existing agreement.
Okay. And what is the will of the board?
We got a motion.
Our motion.
Okay. Uh, under, yes, sir. Thank you for that. Under discussion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously to ratify. Um, the, uh, the next item on the agenda is the county administrators' comments. Uh, Mr. Suggs?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, kind of going back to where we just were for, uh, union, uh, agreements. Uh, appreciate you taking care of the, uh, the carpenters' union. I just wanted to let the commissioners know that we reached out on September 14th via email. We sent an MOU out, uh, to the fire union as well for both the non-officers in the rank, in the rank and file, as well as the officers, uh, that tried to work through an MOU as well so that they could also participate as of October 4th on their increase of 3%. Uh, when that discussion email went out, we got, uh, no response back from that. I brought it up a couple of times, uh, since then and got, uh, nowhere with it. I do understand that they put a, uh, finally put an MOU out for a bid to the non-officers and we got that back at six o'clock last night. So, uh, if it would be the will of the board, again, uh, your administration has went out and tried to assist with the process. Um, the, as a show of good faith, if you would like to go ahead and, uh, just for, for ratification, the, uh, county administrator can sign the MOU for the 3% increase for the non-officers. But I'd like to share the fact that we've been reaching out to them since the 14th to try to get something done for them. And we got it back last night at six o'clock. However, we have not received anything from the officers', uh, portion of that MOU at this time.
Okay. What is the will of the board? Uh, Commissioner Harvey? I think my deal just crashed. Go ahead. Let's try again. I think my thing crashed for a moment. Please, uh, repeat that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've never dealt, had to negotiate with the union. So from what I'm understanding, Mr. Suggs, is they, they just want to go ahead and get their raise and leave their contract still open for negotiations? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Sir, we are definitely, we are certainly under, uh, current negotiations with the union. It was administration who reached out to the union, uh, and asked them if they would like to enter into this MOU on the 3% increase that the Board of County Commissioners had approved as of September, knew they were going to approve on September 25th, uh, to try to go ahead and at least get that portion of, of, uh, increase in their salaries taken care of. It in no way impeded or would have impeded any further negotiations of the, of the continuing contract. We were just trying as administration to, again, show good faith and give them the increase at the same time everybody else was receiving it under the BOCC.
Well, I'm all in, I'm in support of that. The only problem is, I mean, I, I fully want our employees to have the money. But, I mean, does that, does that take away from any negotiations going forward as far as getting them to the table and get the contract?
No, sir. No, no, sir, not at this time. Uh, we are continuing our conversations. We've had some good conversations. Again, this was just, uh, uh, administration trying to show good faith with the direction the Board of County Commissioners on a 3% increase.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion by the board before the chair entertains a motion? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the MOU for the pay raise for the union. As Mr. Suggs?
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Harvey and a second by Commissioner Goddard under discussion. Uh, just like for the board to know that in the past, I think that every MOU has been actually approved by the county administrator. Uh, so, and I think he had the authority to approve this MOU. It wasn't like the total contract that was being ratified. I think he brought it to the, uh, board today out of consideration and, uh, and, uh, transparency. So with that being said, is there any further discussion by the board before we vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, is this, uh, adopting this 3%? Does it just, it doesn't include the officers of the union? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
No, it, it does not. That's correct. I don't think we have.
No, we do, we do not have an MOU on, uh, uh, from the officers at this time. The only MOU I have is from the non-officers, the rank and file.
Okay. I just wanted that clarified. Okay.
Yes, sir.
That, those negotiations will continue then?
Yeah, I'm assuming so, yes, sir. But I just, for the record, we sent that out on September 14th, trying to get this taken care of for them. And, uh, you know, so we'll continue to work as close as we can with them and bring this back as fast as we can for them. Uh, this was, this was brought back today because I, I think it's important that the Board of County Commissioners, uh, get the, get the, uh, recognition they need for approving this 3% increase across the board. And we're trying to work this through as fast as we can to make everybody whole.
Mr. Suggs?
I got a question. Do we really need to vote on this or just give consensus? Because we've already voted on the 3% raise for all the employees and his budget.
That's correct. Like I said earlier, Commissioner Rawls, he did not need to bring this to us because it was a budget increase that we did. He just wanted to have total transparency of his efforts to work towards them. I don't, I don't believe when he comes up with an MOU with the officers that he even has to bring that back either. Definitely an, uh, an issue that was voted, voted on by the board. So like I said, I, I don't believe he had to bring it back today. Um, he just wanted to do it, uh, to, to have complete transparency of where we were. I don't think it hurt a thing. And I think that us ratifying this is just makes it a stronger position. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Um, Mr. Suggs, did you have anything else for us this morning, sir?
Uh, no, sir. Mr. Chairman, I do not. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next, we're going to go to Colonel Commando. Do you have any, anything for us this morning, Rich?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, under commissioners' comments, I'm going to start with, uh, Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to say a big thank you. I, I say it to you often, but, you know, um, this is stressful times for everybody and, and everybody seems to be upset about something. And I think you've done a tremendously good job this, this year in the COVID situation and the Zoom meetings and the virtual environment that we were thrown into, basically. Uh, so, Mr. Chairman, my hat's off to you for the, for the outstanding job that you've done as our chairman. And that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner Harvey. Uh, Commissioner Goddard?
Yeah, I'm just going to have to echo in on that. You've done a phenomenal job. I, I know the hours that you have been putting in during all that COVID, uh, over at the EOC. You've done an excellent job. You should be commended. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that too, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I'll agree also with that. And, and also, you know, we've never been in this situation before, uh, with the COVID. So, and I, I think you've done a good job and staff has too. And all our, you know, constitutional officers and all our employees have done a great job. And, and we'll get through this and move on to, uh, to next year and, and hopefully we're done with that. So that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
I'll join with everybody else in, in committing on, on your handling of this, this year. It, it is, it really has been very stressful for everybody. And, you know, hopefully 2021 will be different. You, you're not going to be able to make the funny little face mask over the zeros like you could for 2020. So maybe that'll be the deal breaker. But, um, you know, in, in all seriousness, I do have a, a citizen's request. I was asked to bring this up again. Um, want to see if any of the commissioners would like to join me in, um, putting the, uh, the monument on the ballot. Um, and since we've never voted on this, see if we can have a discussion about that.
Well, Commissioner Rawls, I don't know that we have a, um, a opportunity at this point to get it on the ballot because the ballots are already printed.
Right. But we, we got other opportunities in the future.
Right. And I, I personally would like to see what recommendations would come out of committee, um, on, and, and have that discussion at that point. I'm truly hoping that by October 13th, they will have a recommendation to come back to the board at that time. And I may, and at that point, then I'd have to make a decision on if I agreed with a place to move it, if they raise the money.
Right.
I don't think we never have, need to have this discussion without saying that that group of individuals has to raise the money. And I don't know if they, if they, if we pick a spot like Veterans Park, for instance, I just don't know that they would raise a quarter of a million dollars to move a statue from the courthouse in Palacca to Veterans Park in East Palacca. Seemed like it would be counterproductive. But like I said, if you don't mind, I'm, I, I may go right along with you on that if, uh, depending on what comes out of the committee and depending on, uh, on what, on, uh, what other factors show up at that point. But, um, I think that it would ju- just behoove us at this point that hopefully, uh, that committee can meet and come up with a recommendation or, or two, um, and that could be presented to us on the 13th of October at our meeting. That's what I'm hoping anyhow. Um, so, uh, or at least the workshop that afternoon, one or the other. But, um, were, were you done, Commissioner Rawls, or do you have something else, sir?
I just, uh, I want to go back to beginning of the meeting when you gave, um, Officer Gentry the, the kudos. It, uh, I, I can't even begin to articulate in words how, I mean, I, I wasn't frustrated. I was, I was, I watched the whole video and I don't think that my blood pressure could have gone up anymore within the first five seconds of that thing starting than it did. Um, physically, I, I was furious at, um, at, at the way the officer was approached and treated. And, um, I hope that the citizens of Putnam County, uh, take the time to thank their, their law enforcement officers and their fire and EMS personnel because they, they deal with a lot of crap on a day-in, day-out basis, to be quite frank with you. Um, and, and they don't have to. That's not part, that's not part of, of the job necessarily. That's just the way we treat them. So, um, I know Putnam County is better than that and, um, folks that, that, uh, are like Mr. Matty, I, I wish them well in their endeavors, but I wish they would do it somewhere else. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, my closing comments, I was, uh, going to echo on your comments at, uh, of what I started out with the meeting on. Um, I agree with everything that you just said and, uh, times two, if it's, if that's even possible. Um, also, uh, I don't know if the papers listening to this, but I would hope the headlines tomorrow, instead of all the other stuff that they make up, would be something county commission chooses to recognize and, and award a one, a great officer of Putnam County. That's what the headline should read tomorrow instead of it being on the 10th page in a, in a one paragraph column, uh, because he, he deserves every bit of this. Um, and if there's nothing else to come before the board today, um, I'll hereby, uh, call this meeting adjourned. And if there's nothing else to come before the board today, I'll hereby call this meeting adjourned.